Everybody see what's happening? I like to do it again. I'm sorry. It's eleven forty-five. I'm electing.
Huh?
Okay. So, we'll really win first. You're called. Oh, he's out there? Okay.
Who's up there?
Shaun. Shaun.
Well, I think he's coming now.
DC.
I'm looking at your posts.
What you all doing today?
Not...
Could you tell?
I'm wearing. I was watching the show. I mean, okay, so, yeah, I don't know what... Yeah, I guess, yeah. Yeah, I look at how we're doing. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna get the meeting started. We want to start as we do all of our meetings on time.
Hello. How are you? Congratulations.
Thanks so much. Thank you.
That's yours. That's your cheers.
Okay.
Hey, Shaun.
Hi, Lauren. How are ya?
Hello, how are you?
I'm well.
Melissa? I sent it to table. Yeah, whatever you found. Yeah, whatever works.
Are we all social distancing and practicing good health habits? Okay. Okay, we'll get going with the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Stafford, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe the first order of business this afternoon is the swearing in of Mayor Alex Spiller, and I believe that will be done by Governor... The Governor of the great state of New Jersey, Phil Murphy. Governor?
How are you? Hello, everybody.
Hi, Governor.
Good, how you doing, sir?
Good to see you. Lauren?
Governor, did you see Christine out there?
What's happening?
Did you see Christine?
I didn't see Christine.
She's looking for you out there.
Nice to see you. Bob, congratulations. Guys, how are you? Congrats. Congrats. I'm not good enough to be a mayor.
Aww, not yet.
Well, hello, Governor. How are you, sir?
Very well. You good?
Good, I'm well.
Nice to see you. You doing great, boys.
Renee.
Good birthday, Renee.
Yep.
Sure see you later. Good birthday.
Absolutely. Indeed, he has.
Tyson.
Hey, Tyson, how are you? How are you? It's good to see you. You want a chair? You wanna sit up here?
Tyson, can you come around by mommy and daddy?
Sure. Where are you, Tyson?
He's so sweet.
Governor, thank you so much for being here.
You have to get up.
Come, Tyson.
I know, I gotta try and follow around today. Hey, what's up?
Go with mommy. Tyson, come stand by me, please.
Tyson, how are you, buddy? Tyson, sit down.
Say hi to the governor. You're the governor.
I don't know. I don't know. What's your work? I don't know what you're working on.
Everybody good?
Good.
I state your name. Shaun Spiller. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution. That I will support the Constitution. Of the United States. Of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the State of New Jersey. State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith. And that I will bear true faith. And allegiance to the same. And allegiance to the same. And to the governments established. And to the governments established. In the United States. In the United States. And in this state. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear. I do further solemnly swear. That I will faithfully. That I will faithfully. Impartially. Impartially. And justly perform. And justly perform. All the duties of. All the duties of. Mayor of the Township of Montclair. Mayor of the Township of Montclair. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. So help me God. Congratulations! Incredible honor. I would love to say a few words. I gotta sign this, though.
Yes, please.
Sure. There you go, Governor. Christine's looking for you outside. She's gonna say hello. I think she did it right.
I signed where it says I'm in, right?
I think so. Clerk, where's the clerk?
Madam Clerk, can you help?
Tell him what to sign.
No, I just signed.
Got it? You got it?
Who do I give this to?
Leave it right here.
Right here? Thank you.
There you go. Make sure it's right.
Can I say a few words, Shaun, before...
Please, Governor, please.
I feel badly because I can't stay for the other swearings in, both incumbents as well as newly elected folks. So, to everybody in one of my favorite communities in the whole wide world, please forgive me for eating and running. So, it is an incredible... I just had a few words if I could say, if I could take a couple of minutes here. It's an incredible honor and privilege to be here and specifically to be here for you, Shaun, and to administer the oath. You're a dear friend, and it's a real thrill and a real treat. I also want to thank your predecessor, Bob. God bless you for the great work. Thank you, sir. And again, to both the folks who have been re-elected as well as the newly elected. I take my hat off to you and Renee, a race well run.
Thank you, sir.
So, it's great to be here, by the way, not only with you but with Lauren and Tyson and little brother Brody, who I have seen pictures of but haven't had the honor of meeting until today, and in each of your extended families who are here today, and it's a treat to be here. If that weren't enough, Sandy Lazara is here, all the way in from Passaic County and from your stomping grounds up in Wayne. So, and again, I take my hat off to everybody who is both elected newly and incumbents. Even this is important enough that our chief counsel, Matt Plackton, is here with us. So, I... A proud resident of Montclair, as is my dear friend and Democratic Chair Brendan Gill is in the House. Brendan, bless you. I look around, I can say a lot of things about a lot of people here, so I'm gonna stop. Otherwise, I'm gonna start offending the folks that I don't acknowledge. Montclair is one of, and I don't say this lightly, is one of New Jersey's true treasures. A vibrant community, a diverse community with active and committed residents, a strong small business sector, and a long history of progressive leadership, not just for Montclair but for Essex County and for the state. And I think the task before you, my friend, is to ensure that that legacy continues to thrive, and you are, knowing you as well as I do, you are more than up to that task. In so many ways, the future of Montclair reflects the future of the state writ large. We know that the backbone of our future lays in strong and ever-forward-reaching public schools. We know that our state's future relies on great institutions of higher education. We know our state's future must embrace the entrepreneurial spirit on the one hand while at the same time also protecting at every step labor. We know our state's future must include everyone who wishes to be a part of it, residents of all races and religions, of every ethnicity and creed, of every background and nationality, all pulling together in common cause. We are engaged morning, noon, and night, I have to say, in the emerging work of emerging from the COVID-19 pandemic, and that our absolute goal and objective is to emerge stronger than before and resilient for the challenges still ahead. This is not a question of going back to some rose-colored place that we used to be. This is getting the state to a place that it's never been before. We are tearing down walls at the same time, built by years, centuries in fact, of systemic racism, to ensure that every resident can be an equal partner in our future. And we're continuing our work to create a stronger and fairer New Jersey that we've been at since day one, long before the pandemic, that works not just for some but for every family in this state. And perhaps at no time in our history has the need been stronger or more emergent for all of our shared values and indeed common goals to converge than right now. Shaun, for now, a number of years, I've been honored to call you not just a partner but a dear friend in our work to ensure the best of the nation, public schools continue to be the home of the nation's best educators and support staff, and I think we've done a lot together over this time. And Sandy, I want to give you a shout-out as an education leader as well. And starting today, we get another layer of our relationship. I'll be equally honored to call you as mayor now, a partner in governing. The voices of our state's municipalities are vital in charting our course forward, and as you have done in your day job, I know you will never shy from sharing your insights, your ideas, your concerns. I've always looked at Montclair as a leader among our communities, and I know, Shaun, under your leadership, it will continue to be just that. And as you now have taken the oath and as you now assume leadership of this historic and iconic community, you have in the governor's office not just friends, which you do for sure have, but partners in governing. So, I look forward to my many, 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 I hope hundreds if not thousands of future visits to Montclair and watching how you and your colleagues keep this community moving forward, and it's again one of my favorite places in the entire wide world. So, thank you. God bless you and your colleagues. I'm honored to be with you today. I only wish I could stay. I haven't done many outings in the past three and a half months. I had surgery and then we've been fighting this damn pandemic, which is something that feels like it never goes away. It's... And the toll we've paid is enormous. But there are exceptions to our, what seems to be a groundhog routine every day for us, and this is a notable exception. I wouldn't have missed this, Shaun. God bless you and Lauren, the boys, your extended families, your colleagues. Thank you as always for having me. Thank you, everybody.
Here was the mayor said. Well, thank you, Governor. First and foremost, I want to just say, what an honor. To you, Governor, for you to take the time out of your tremendously busy schedule to swear me in today, I'm immensely grateful and humbled. For me, having you here isn't just so special because I have the governor of the state of New Jersey swearing me in, but yes, that is pretty cool, everybody, so I'm pretty psyched about that. But also because, one, I have been so fortunate in my career to meet and get to know some wonderful elected public servants, whether that be at the local level here in Montclair like Mayor Jackson, at the county level with Freeholder President Brendan Gill, the state with Assemblypeople like Assemblyman Giblin and Assemblywoman Timberlake and Senator Gill, or right at the top with you as governor. I have learned from all of you about how to put forward good policy for the people. I have learned what commitment takes to lead, especially during difficult times. And most importantly, I have seen your character and who you are as people. I am most grateful and humbled that you are here to swear me in, Governor, because of who you are as a person and because I consider you a personal friend. So, thank you. Now, to the voters of Montclair, I say thank you. It is a tremendous responsibility that you have bestowed upon me by electing me as your mayor. I am committed to representing everything that Montclair so proudly stands for and to support, guide, to listen to, and to lead our most important asset, our people. We have much to do to keep the people safe and healthy and to ensure we emerge from this pandemic as strong or stronger than we were before. We are, as a nation, rightfully focused on racial and social justice, and we will continue to lead with important conversations and meaningful action. But no matter what our challenges, I know we are prepared to meet them. We have worked hard over our last eight years to put us on strong financial footing, reducing our debt by over sixty million dollars. We have addressed needed improvements to our infrastructure with street paving, new sewer lines, and much more. This will serve us well as we continue that important work while we weather any economic challenges caused by this pandemic. And those things matter because while we rightfully address the major issues before us now, we also know that local government needs to make sure people have safe intersections, have potholes on their streets filled, although here in Montclair, we pave the whole street, so just so you know, we don't just fill... Have the right to clean running water and to take care of the things that make a difference in their daily lives. I'm excited because I know we have a great team coming in to serve Montclair well. We have a diverse committed group in Councilman Russo, Yakabelis, and Hurlock, Councilwoman Schlegel, Price Abrams, and Councilman Cummings. I look forward to serving these next four years with each of you. Finally, I want to thank my family and friends for their everlasting support. I know many could not be here today because of social distancing but are watching at home. I know my son Tyson, who is running all around the room here. I know he's probably the most excited. He's been reading the book, The Little Blue Truck Leads the Way, and so he has learned that mayors give speeches, usually standing on the back of little blue trucks. So, Tyson here is daddy giving his speech. Yeah. So, to Tyson, to little brother Brody, I love you both. To my dad and brother who are both here, I love you and thank you for always being a great dad and a great little brother. To my mother-in-law and father-in-law, you guys are the best, and I love you both. To my cousins, where are ya? Aunt Joan and Jelani, thank you for being such an important part of my life and always keeping me close to my mom. Thank you. Thank you to Kim and John, my brother and sister-in-laws. I love you guys, too. Wherever you are, too, John. My great friends who are here, Ian, Freeholder Director, Lazara, Peddle, Marcia, all of you, thank you so much for always being such great friends. So, thank you. To the best team ever, I want to say thank you to Henry, Matt, and Angela. You guys are top-notch, so thank you. Thank you all for joining me here today, and thank you again to the many family and friends listening online, Uncle Mike's, my great friend John, and others. Thank you all. And lastly, but certainly not least, I want to thank my beautiful wife. While I was busy running for mayor, you were preparing to give birth to our son, which happened right after the election, so well done. You are and have always been my biggest supporter in addition to being my loving wife. I love you, and I thank you. So, to all of you again and to all the voters, I simply say, thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Governor. Tyson, he's over here.
Get my wife in.
I don't know where the water is. So...
Thank you.
You want to see all you guys out? Yeah, thanks for the visit. All right, you guys all on the bus, so they can hear at the next three minutes.
Congratulations. Much love. Much love to you. Thank you. We don't know. I go over in the back.
Ground fire is live. Sir.
Over there.
Well, I think the way they're gonna do it is as each person is, as David is sworn in, he'll come up and he'll take this, and then Yakabelis will come up, and the other people will...
There we go, as they come in.
Yes.
Okay. I don't know what's going on. I can't get my family to come in here. He has to put this saying outside, this saying, but kept out there, kept out. I get Christine, I think I can maybe do Luke the thing, so maybe, I think that's who's here. Vic DeLure, or whatever he is, but he came because... Well, we can't start without Shaun being... Oh, it looks like he's getting ready to pour down. Never feel good. Right. Oh, that's right, listen. Eight good years, whatever, trying to screw it up. Who's next? Now, we're trying to figure it out. I'm just gonna order. My wife is still not in this room.
How are you, Judge?
How you doing?
Yes.
My wife's not even in there. Where's my wife? She's been outside.
I don't know. I don't know how this works.
She's been waiting in the hallway, been kept out, she said.
I don't understand. It's really got me pissed off.
She's outside.
Why is my wife not being allowed in? Everybody else is in. My wife's been... She claims she's been kept out. How could that be?
Does that work? Yeah. Oh, okay. I thought you wanted...
Won't be your guests.
If he wants to come in. There's my wife. I just care about my wife. Keep him out. I don't care who's in or out. I just want my wife here. What is going on? What is going on? Trying to tag along. People trying to tag along. My wife is the one I want to hear. He must have bugged the hell out of Christine. See, now I got Louie, that is Mayor Louie. Vic.
Mayor. All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna resume the meeting.
The next order of business is the swearing in of Counselor-at-Large Robert Russo.
Actually, before that, Mr. Stafford, if I may, I'm gonna...
Of course. My...
Shaun, you here?
Yes, sir.
It's my privilege to present the gavel, and it becomes useful in some of the meetings we've had, I will tell you, to the newly-elected mayor of, and sworn-in mayor of the Township of Montclair, Shaun Spiller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're in charge. You're in charge. Okay, repeat after me. I... Robert J. Russo. Bob Russo. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States... That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance... And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the same. To the same. And to the governments established... And to the governments established. In the United States... In the United States of America. And in this state. And in this state of New Jersey. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear... I do further solemnly swear... That I will faithfully... That I will faithfully... Impartially... Impartially. And justly perform... And justly perform... All of my duties... All of my duties... Of Counselor-at-Large... Of Counselor-at-Large... For the Township of Montclair... For the Township of Montclair... According to the best of my abilities... According to the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God, as I have done twenty years... Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. A lozenge for my throat. Only my wife would remember that.
Next will be the administering of the oath of Counselor-elect Peter Yakabelis by Municipal Court Judge Joseph Angelo.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor DeLuque of Maplewood was here for me. Thank you. Louise Pallagano, Clerk of Bloomfield, here. Thank you.
All right, repeat after me. I... Is your name? Peter Yakabelis. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear... That I will support the Constitution of the United States... That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution... And the Constitution. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the same. To the same. And to the governments established... And to the governments established. In the United States... In the United States of America. And in this state. And in this state of New Jersey. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear... I do further solemnly swear... That I will faithfully... That I will faithfully... Impartially... Impartially. And justly perform... And justly perform... All of my duties... All of my duties... Of Counselor-at-Large... Of Counselor-at-Large... For the Township of Montclair... For the Township of Montclair... According to the best of my abilities... According to the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God, as I have done twenty years... Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. A lozenge for my throat. Only my wife would remember that.
Next will be the administering of the oath of Counselor-elect Peter Yakabelis by Municipal Court Judge Joseph Angelo.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor DeLuque of Maplewood was here for me. Thank you. Louise Pallagano, Clerk of Bloomfield, here. Thank you.
All right, repeat after me. I... Is your name? Peter Yakabelis. Do solemnly swear... Do solemnly swear... That I will support the Constitution of the United States... That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution... And the Constitution. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey. And that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the same. To the same. And to the governments established... And to the governments established. In the United States... In the United States of America. And in this state. And in this state of New Jersey. Under the authority of the people. Under the authority of the people. I do further solemnly swear... I do further solemnly swear... That I will faithfully... That I will faithfully... Impartially... Impartially. And justly perform... And justly perform... All of my duties... All of my duties... Of Counselor-at-Large... Of Counselor-at-Large... For the Township of Montclair... For the Township of Montclair... According to the best of my abilities... According to the best of my abilities. So help me God. So help me God, as I have done twenty years... Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. A lozenge for my throat. Only my wife would remember that.
Next will be the administering of the oath of Counselor-elect Peter Yakabelis by Municipal Court Judge Joseph Angelo.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor DeLuque of Maplewood was here for me. Thank you. Louise Pallagano, Clerk of Bloomfield, here. Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Tyson, he's over here.
I can't get my wife in.
Congratulations. Much love. Much love to you. Thank you. We don't know. Over there.
Well, I think the way they're gonna do it is as each person is, as David is sworn in, he'll come up and he'll take this, and then Jacob Bellis will come up, and then the other people will come in.
And we go as they come in?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know what's going on. I can't get my family to come in here. He has to put this saying outside, just saying it, but kept out there, kept out. I think that's who's here. Vic DeLuca. Or whatever he is, but he came because... Well, we can't start without showing him.
Oh, it looks like he's getting ready to pour down. Never feel good.
Right. Oh, that's right. Listen. Eight good years, whatever. I screwed up my dress. Who's next?
Now, we're trying to figure it out. I'm just gonna order.
My wife is still not in this room.
How are you, Judge?
My wife isn't in there. Where's my wife? She's been outside.
I don't know. I don't know how this works. Is she outside?
She's been waiting in the hallway, been kept out, she said. I don't understand. It really got me pissed off. Why, why, why is my wife not being allowed in? Everybody else is in. My wife's been, she claims she's, she's been, claimed she's been kept out. How could that be?
Won't be your guests.
If he wants to come in. There's my wife. I just care about my wife. Keep him out, keep him out. I don't care, I don't care who's in or out, I just want my wife here. What is going on? What is going on, trying to tag along? People trying to tag along. My wife is the one I want here. He must have bugged the hell out of Christine. See, now I got Louie, that is Mayor Louie. Vic.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna resume the meeting.
The next order of business is the swearing in of Councilor-at-Large, Robert Russo.
Actually, before that, Mr. Stafford, if I may, I'm gonna...
Of course. My apologies.
It's, Sean, you're here?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's my privilege to present the, the gavel, and it becomes useful in some of the meetings we've had, I will tell you, to the newly-elected mayor of, and sworn-in mayor of the Township of Montclair, Sean Spiller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, repeat after me. I...
I.
Robert J. Russo.
Bob Russo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States of America.
And in this state.
And in this state of New Jersey.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of my duties.
All of my duties.
Of Councilor-at-Large.
Of Councilor-at-Large.
For the Township of Montclair.
For the Township of Montclair.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God, as I have done 20 years.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. A lozenge for my throat. Only my wife would remember that.
Next will be the administering of the oath of Councilor-elect Peter Yakabelis by Municipal Court Judge Joseph Angelo.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor DeLuca of Maplewood was here for me. Thank you. Louise Palagano, Clerk of Bloomfield, here. Thank you.
All right, repeat after me. I, I, say your name.
Peter Yakabelis.
Do solemnly affirm, do solemnly affirm, that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the United States, and the Constitution, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, and that I will, I will bear true faith and allegiance, to the same, to the same, and to the governments established, to the governments established, in the United States, in the United States, and in this state, and in this state, under the authority of the people, under the authority of the people. I do further, I do further solemnly affirm, I do further solemnly affirm, that I will faithfully, that I will faithfully, impartially and justly, impartially and justly, perform all of the duties, perform all of the duties, of Councilor-at-Large of the Township of Montclair, of Councilor-at-Large of the Township of Montclair, according to the best of my ability, according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
I said DeLuca already. Thank you. Before I, I depart here, I just have, I said everything I, really I wanted to say last week, and I meant every word of it. However, I, when I first sat here, it was, had been most recently occupied by Roger Terry, who was in the room, and I was very proud to accept that Roger kinda represents old Montclair, and I've got to know Peter Yakabelis, who represents new Montclair, and I'm proud to give it to him, so to speak. He earned it. On my way over here, an analogy occurred to me, and it's what they say about a boat owner. There are two, the two happiest days in any boat owner's life is the day he buys it and the day he sells it. These are the key to 205. I happily give them to Peter Yakabelis.
Next will be the administering of the oath to Councilman William Herlock.
All right, I.
I.
Say your name.
William Herlock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the State, the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established.
To the same and to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all of the duties.
Perform all of the duties.
Of First Ward Counselor of the Township of Montclair.
Of First Ward Counselor of the Township of Montclair.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
If you'll indulge me for just a minute, I'm gonna go ahead and do my remarks now while my family are all still here. And true to form, my mask strap just broke, but I'm still ready to go. I wanna thank you all for coming out today, to be with us, to share in the celebration of our, our big day. I want to especially thank my daughter Brittany, my son Ryan, who are both here with me today. Love you guys. I don't usually get upset. This is ridiculous. I wanna thank my, thank you. I wanna thank my partner Heather, Allison as well, my family, my mom and dad, Ann and Bill Herlock, who are both with me here today, who both instilled what it is to be a public servant, as both of them were public servants in their long careers. My dad is a retired detective lieutenant, and my mother is a teacher's aide. I wanna thank my sister Laura, and her significant other Louis for coming today, and my sister Dorothy as well for coming today. As many of you know, indulge me for just a minute, because I'm, I'm gonna take a turn here. This was not an easy campaign because of the pandemic, but unrelated to the pandemic, there were, we unfortunately, unfortunately, I did, witnessed some very un-Montclarian things during this last campaign, and forgive me, but I've gotta mention it. Lawn signs were stolen, parades were conducted in front of our houses when we were trying to work, and our kids were trying to take their exams. My personal finances had been rummaged through. I was attacked personally and unfairly. We were called corrupt and other names. Our social media sites were hacked. Having participated in multiple elections here in Montclair, I'm, I'm here to tell you, that is not the way we do things in Montclair, and I hope that this will never, ever be repeated again. On a much more positive note, I wanna thank Jay Church, my campaign manager, Brandon Hemnareen, who was my campaign treasurer, Heather and Ryan, who helped me with, Heather with social media and Ryan with computer. Giving you my age now, but Zoom to me was an old kids' television show back in the day, and I had to know what that meant on social media now, so thank you both. I wanna thank Steven Yanez, who was my deputy campaign manager, the many district captains in the First Ward who helped me with my campaign. I wanna thank all the individuals who manned the telephone banks, made the telephone calls, placed the lawn signs, posted on social media, and helped in oh-so-many ways. I wanna thank all who donated to my campaign, and that of my slate. I wanna thank all the people who saw past the campaign nonsense and supported me based on my proven record over the last eight years. I wanna thank our slate advisors, Matt, Henry, and Angela, and our slate treasurer, Christine. I wanna thank Mayor Sean Spiller, my slate mates as well, Robin, Roger, Lori, and Bob. I wanna welcome Peter and David, David and Kimberly, who I've known for many years as our sons grew up together since North, since elementary school. Peter, I look forward to working with you as well. We're getting to know each other during the campaign. Look forward to serving with you. Just so that we are clear, neither one of you I attribute to the nonsense that went on during the campaigns. I wanted also to thank my, I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but because of the social distancing, we have to segue my family out, but I guess it's what you would call a spoiler alert in the movies. I also wanna thank my colleagues for bestowing the honor of now serving as our town's deputy mayor. This means a great deal to me, especially so since my family can be here with me today. I look forward to serving with distinction in that capacity, and I thank you all for the honor that you bestowed on me. I wanna thank our township manager, our township clerks, our deputy clerk, attorney, deputy town manager, all of our staff who've worked tirelessly throughout this pandemic and continue to serve our town in oh-so-many ways. I wanna also thank you as well to our sisters, thank you out to our sister cities, particularly Aquilonia and London, who have made, made overtures to us. Mayor Giancarlo DeVito, I believe, may have sent you a letter.
I was just, I was just gonna say, a nice cart and a big cake, so.
There you go. Excellent. Their cakes are good there, I have to tell you. Mayor Jackson and I, when we were there, had many desserts over in Aquilonia. For, for those of you who've been with me down this road before, you know that July 1st is a very special day for me, for a number of reasons. We moved into our house 21 years ago on July 1st here in Montclair, best move we ever made. My son Ryan was baptized on that date. Sadly, my grandmother passed away 19 years ago. I know she's looking down on me today. I was sworn in as a council member two times before on July 1st, and now I'm going on a third term as, as your councilman in the First Ward, and I appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you personally too for the friendship and the relationship that we've had over the years. We saw past a lot of the partisan nonsense, and we got things done for Montclair, and I wanna thank you for the opportunity to do that. I'm gonna miss your friendship. Godspeed, my friend. As I've said many times... They questioned us several times. Why are you working with Herlock? He's a blupperty-bye. Why are you working with Jackson? He's a blupperty-bye. We both said, because we're getting stuff done, and we used to joke about it. As I've said many times, it's an honor and a privilege to represent the First Ward on the Town Council here in Montclair. I am humbled that the residents have returned me to office to serve a third term. Rest assured, I do not take that lightly. In so doing, I want you all to know that I'm committed to continuing the work we started eight years ago, reducing our debt, being fiscally responsible, rebuilding our infrastructure, curbs, streets, sidewalks, parks, addressing constituent concerns, recovering from the pandemic by becoming even stronger than we were before, healing as we address concerns about national law enforcement issues, continuing to make Montclair the great place that it is and always will be. It's time for all of us together, council members, staff, citizens, to do our part and work together. To those of you who live in the First Ward, I look forward to continuing to serve you over these next four years. I look forward to continuing to serve the town in the capacity as deputy mayor. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart.
And Mr. Stafford, before you go up, I know we had Mayor Remson in here before. I just wanted to give him a shout-out, tell him a big thank you for coming. I also see Assemblyman Giblin has joined us in the back, so thank you as well, Assemblyman. Thank you.
Next will be the administering of the oath to Counselor Robin Schlegar.
All right, I say your name.
I, Robin Schlegar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of Second Ward Counselor of the Township of Montclair.
Second Ward Councilwoman of the Township of Montclair.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
While the judge signs the oath, I, I feel it necessary to say that those of you with eyeglasses will understand immediately what I'm gonna say. It's not easy for the judge to give that oath while his glasses are fogging up because of his face covering. That's, that's good stuff. Next will be the administering of the oath to Counselor-elect Lori Price Abrams.
All right, I.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly affirm.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform, perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of Third Ward Counselor.
Of Third Ward Counselor.
Of the Township of Montclair.
Of the Township of Montclair.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
Next will be the administering of the oath to Counselor-elect David Cummings.
All right, I. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of Fourth Ward Counselor of the Township of Montclair.
Of Fourth Ward Counselor of the Township of Montclair.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So since Bill spoke, I'm gonna take this opportunity to speak as well.
I did it because the mayor did it too, so.
I see how the blame game starts around here, doesn't it?
I timed Murphy, I timed Sean, and I timed Bill. I get six and a half minutes. It's on my clock. Honestly, first I wanna thank all the voters who have entrusted me to be a voice for you and to represent you. I'm honored and humbled to be the Fourth Ward Counselor. I have to thank Dr. Renee Baskerville for asking me to run on her team. Dr. Baskerville has been an advocate for the community her entire life, her 12 years as the Fourth Ward Counselor, testament to her work, dedication, and love for this town. To my councilmates, we don't know what the future holds or what challenges we may face. We do know right now there is a national public health crisis that has turned life upside down. COVID-19 has put us, has put a pause on everyone's life because of its impact on our friends and family members. It's not over, and we have to remain steadfast to get this pandemic under control. I would be remiss, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the impact that the murder of George Floyd has also had on our country. As a black man who has lived in the deep south of Mississippi and driven across the Edmund Pettus Bridge many times while traveling from Jackson to Montgomery, the same bridge where civil rights fighters were... where civil rights activists were beaten and bludgeoned, the same route they marched, you get a sense of history that a textbook or video cannot give you. I've done that ride. Mr. Floyd's death has had a similar impact as Emmett Till's. When his mother made sure to have an open casket funeral showed the brutality of the death that caused this nation to take a look at itself. I can tell you again, I've driven through the Mississippi Delta, many Mississippi, and similarly, the smell of cotton is something I know deeply. Here in Montclair, we are not immune to this. As you know, yesterday we had a very ugly incident in this town. It's put us on the nation's watch. So we are not immune to these things. Our government has to do things to the will of the people, but we also have to make sure that we continue to keep the diversity and the love that this town bestowed on me as a child and someone who can sit here right now and talk to you. I take this position very seriously. Being a Fourth Ward Councilor is a humbling and remarkable opportunity for me. When I look at these pictures on those walls, I see individuals who I looked up to as a kid. Jim Ramsey, Audrey Fletcher, Bobby Riley, Robert Jackson, I can call you BB now, Brian Scantleberry, John Griffith, Sandy Lang, Charles Smith, who was married to my first cousin, Quinta. These are individuals that I know, and these are individuals that their mere presence gave a little kid born on Michigan Street, raised on Orange Road, no hesitation that there's anything he could do. And as I stand here before you as a councilperson, I let you know, these are the people who paved the way. But I also have to say that individuals in this room, Senator Gill, I mean Freeholder Gill, Assemblyman Tom Giblin, Senator Nia Gill, Congressman Mikey Sherrill, they also represent Montclair. So Montclair will be represented in the county, the state, and locally. And I think having a governor here to swear in Mayor Spiller is an example of the type of reach that we have. It's truly hard to explain what this moment means. I look out and see generations of my family. I've said many times on the campaign trail when I was on the Board of Education, I've had a family member graduate from Montclair High School every decade since 1940. My Aunt Betty is sitting here right now, 1947 graduate. My daughter Catherine, my daughter Elizabeth, my cousins, my niece Carol, my nephew Andrew, my cousin Boo, cousin Leroy, cousin Eris. That's my family, and without them, there's no way I would be here. I'm not going to be also admitting that my son David, who could not be here because he remained down in Savannah to work on his senior animation film, is also someone that I love and has meant a lot to me. That brings me to the most important individuals. And I say individuals. Did I say Pam? Trust me, my sister Pam, my brother Chucky, my sister Tracy, and my deceased brother Reese, but my sister Pam. Pam is my fighter. We're not going to like each other tomorrow, but we'll love each other next week. But that's my sister, and I love her the best. But I have to, like everyone, understand that the woman to my right, my wife, who, when I wrote this speech, corrected me from behind to beside, and that is something that I personally made sure that I wanted to acknowledge. She's been there. She's been there to raise our kids. She's been there to do things for me to allow me the opportunity to be available to the community in many ways. I love you, honey. I will always love you, and I appreciate you. My mom is not here, Carol Cummings, but no, her biting tongue is something that I have. But the man who married her, Daddy, Morris Cummings. I want to tell you something about my dad that really personifies kindness, humbleness, and what it means to be a man. He met my mom in Glenfield Park. He was taking his nephew, Whoopi, there to play. My mom had four kids, all under the age of 10. He married her. I want you to think about that. I came along later. My mother and father, none of them had a high school diploma, high school diploma or degree, but four to five kids are college graduates. Their grandchildren are college graduates. That legacy started because they believed in education, they believed in family, but more importantly, they believed in hard work. I saw my dad get up at 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning. My mother would already be out the house. They didn't get back till 6:00 PM, but still dinner was cooked. If you don't know me, my background professionally was as a sports writer. It started when I was probably five years old, because my dad had me watch the Cowboys beat the Dolphins in the Super Bowl, but then after that, my favorite athlete, secretary. Those are my first visions of sports. And who knew one day that I actually learned how to read, copying my dad reading the Star Legend and the New York Daily News? So I must have been very happy to see his son become a sports writer for the Daily News. But Dad, I would not have ever been able to do that without you and the support that you and Mom. So I stand here on the shoulders of greatness and at a time when this township will require the same leadership that we always had. We will be diverse, we will be diligent, we will listen to the people. We will not always do what you want us to do, but I am determined that we will do what you need us to do. So I stand here humbly, respectfully, and want to say to all of my council colleagues, I'm sorry that you didn't get a chance to speak, but sometimes it's good to be last. And with that, I look forward to getting to work. See, when you have a woman beside you, she doesn't miss anything. My pastor, Reverend Glover, thank you for making it here and being here. Your leadership has guided me spiritually and led me to the Lord in a manner that I am proud to say I'm a Christian, and I live by the Christian values. I know I will make mistakes, but as I've always said, any challenge that I've been given, if you believe in the Lord, you know he will give you the tools to make it work. So thank you all.
Amen.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Spiller.
Present.
Councilor Cummings.
Present.
Councilor Herlock.
Present.
Councilor Price Abrams.
Present.
Councilor Russo.
Present.
Councilor Schlegar.
Here.
Councilor Yacabellus.
Present.
Thank you very much. Next, we do have some proclamations for outgoing council members, and I'm going to ask Councilwoman Schlegar, if you don't mind, to. Robin, would you like to go to the podium? Thank you.
I'm here to present this proclamation to honoring Dr. Renee E. Baskerville. Okay, whereas Dr. Renee Baskerville has served the community of Montclair throughout her life, through her participation on boards and committees, her work as a teacher, mentor, and healthcare provider, and especially in her work representing the residents of the Fourth Ward as their council representative since 2008. And whereas a fourth-generation Essex County resident, Dr. Baskerville is the proud product of the Montclair Public School Systems, St. Paul's Baptist Church, Grassroots, and YWCA families. Based on the encouragement and example of her parents and extended families, she learned to place particular emphasis on education, public service, committing her efforts to involvements in the decision-making process concerning all areas that impact community and quality of life in her community. And whereas, following her graduation from Oberlin College, where she earned a Bachelor of Science degree, Dr. Baskerville returned to Essex County and taught in the Montclair Public Schools, recognizing the connection between healthy minds and bodies, and understanding that students cannot learn and grow to capacity unless they are strong in mind, body, and spirit. Dr. Baskerville obtained her medical degree from the New Jersey College of Medicine and Dentistry. As a physician, she has worked tirelessly to provide treatment, instruction, and preventive measures, and education to the residents of Essex County. Initially as a pediatrician, resident at UMDNJ, United Presbyterian Children's Hospital, and continuing with her participation in the development of healthcare provision for several school-based health facilities, her involvement in both an advisory capacity and in her hands-on work with the youngest and most vulnerable members of our community is illustrative of her belief that the difference an individual makes in the lives of others is what determine the significance of the life that they lead. And whereas, Dr. Baskerville's career as an active community volunteer includes having served as both a member and vice president of the Board of Education, a member of the Board of School Estimate, Board of Adjustment, Montclair Housing Commission, she worked as council liaison to the Civil Rights Commission, Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs Advisory Committee. She has served as a member of the Board of Directors of the Neighborhood Center and as the founder and spokesperson of the Friends of Canterbury and Ishing Park, and on the executive board of the Montclair Chapter of the NAACP. And whereas, Dr. Baskerville is the recipient of many awards and citations, the National Council of Negro Women Community Service Award, the Montclair Branch NAACP Thurgood Marshall Award, the Montclair Neighborhood Development Corporation 2010 Leadership Award, Sharon Miller's Academy for the Performing Arts Award for Children and the Arts, the Wynona M. Lipmin Award, the Shirley Chisholm Catalyst for Change Award, and the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated Community Service Award are a few examples of the recognition she has received over many, many years of service. And whereas, a woman of faith, Dr. Baskerville believes that people become their best by giving to others. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair in the County of Essex recognize and thank Councilor Renee E. Baskerville, M.D., for her many years of exemplary service to the people of Montclair, and anticipate the contribution she will make to betterment of the community in the years ahead. And I proudly give this to Dr. Baskerville, who I've sat next to for the past eight years on the council.
Thank you. Councilman Herlock, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to get the mayor. McMahon, if you would, please.
This is a proclamation honoring Deputy Mayor Rich McMahon. Deputy Mayor Rich McMahon has served the Township of Montclair as an at-large council representative for the last eight years, the last year beginning July 1, 2019, as our deputy mayor. His belief in Montclair as a community that embraces change while holding on to the attributes that makes it great, a desire to challenge himself by learning even more about the community he grew up in, and following a family tradition of service, and local government led to his decision in 2012 to run for office. I'm glad you did. And whereas Deputy Mayor McMahon has a bachelor's degree from Boston College, after earning a Juris Doctor degree from Seton Hall Law School, the proud fourth-generation resident established his home and raised and educated his three children in Montclair. And whereas, the deputy mayor is an active community volunteer, serving as vice chair of the Montclair Ambulance Unit, board member of the 100 Club, and a member of the Ray Festa Memorial Foundation. He is also a four-time past president of the Commonwealth Club and a Mercier Club member. In his service to each of these organizations, he has brought his expertise, leadership, collegial good spirit, and intelligence seeking to improve the safety, success, and well-being of Montclair's residents, business owners, and visitors. And whereas, Deputy Mayor McMahon is also known for his efforts in creating the Yogi Barrow Way Memorial at the Edgewood Road and Edgewood Terrace intersection as a tribute to the town's baseball legend. And whereas, in his council position, Mr. McMahon has served as a member of the Board of School Estimate, which we serve together on, the Finance Committee, which we also serve together on, Municipal Services and Community Committee, Public Safety Committee, and liaison to several township boards and committees, including the Parking Advisory Committee. His devoted service to the township has influenced the growth and progress of our community. And whereas, Rich McMahon's love of Montclair is rivaled only by his love and enjoyment of his family, his wife Annie, children Megan, Max, and Kiara Lynn, and grandchildren Ward Peter and Marin. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair and the County of Essex honor and express our sincerest appreciation to Rich McMahon for his years of dedication and service to Montclair and its citizens, knowing that he will continue to contribute to the life of the community in new and interesting ways, and hopefully continue to work on home projects such as the production of delicious maple syrup, which I've had a lot of. It's amazing, really amazing. And Rich, personally, I'm going to miss your friendship.
Rich, where's the maple syrup? The maple syrup?
I truly appreciate this, and I, you know, we all say we're humbled by it. I am humbled by all of this. And listening to the mayor last week and some of the things said this week, one thing I haven't said is that Montclair is a town of 39,000 people. We are famous nationally. We are famous internationally. How many towns in the United States of America of 39,000 can say that? It's just astonishing. So, you know, as I said last week, I never aspire to be anywhere else. I loved doing this, being here. I'm happy to pass it on, and thank you all. It's been great.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. All right. Township of Montclair, New Jersey, proclamation honoring Mayor Robert D. Jackson. Whereas, lifelong Montclair resident Robert Jackson has worked throughout his life, not only in his role as mayor, but also as an active community volunteer to support Montclair as the vibrant, attractive community it is known to be. as the vibrant, attractive community it is known to be, a community as diverse as it is united, a place that treasures the bond that connects its residents. And whereas, Robert Jackson is the first mayor to serve twice since the council-manager form of government was adopted in 1980. Congratulations there, Mayor. His first term as mayor was from July 1st, 1987, to July 1st, 1988. And I've looked at all the pictures over there, Mayor. Yeah, a little different, maybe. He was elected again in 2012 and 2016. His work on behalf of the township exemplifies the best of what it means to serve the public. And whereas, Mayor Jackson is a graduate of Princeton University and is a master's of Business Administration from Harvard University, neither of which are Rutgers, but that's good, Mayor. All right. You did. His involvement in his community includes having served on the Montclair Radon Task Force, the Montclair Library, as a Montclair Library trustee, a Montclair Kimberly Academy Board Member, a member of the council on affordable housing as a board member, a St. Paul's Baptist Church trustee, a Montclair United Soccer Team Manager, and much more. As a community leader, he has provided a guiding light of strength and stability. And whereas, Mayor Jackson has led Montclair with exemplary effort and unwavering professionalism. In the aftermath of Tropical Storm Sandy, the mayor headed the daily council meetings in which he teleconferenced with PSCNG representatives and the governor's office, working to address the outages that Montclair experienced as one of the communities hit hardest by the destruction, and also seeking to keep the public safe and informed. And now, as Montclair, the state of New Jersey, our county in the world, deal with COVID-19 and the pandemic we face, he and the council have worked to ensure the safety of Montclair's citizens and public employees. And whereas, Mayor Jackson has served on various committees as a member and chairperson, and always kept the welfare of the residents first and foremost in making decisions. As head of the Township Finance Committee, he has worked assiduously to achieve a AAA bond rating for the township. He has spearheaded and supported many improvements to the township's infrastructure and acted to increase Montclair's attraction as a destination community, helping to promote and create the performance venue on Seymour Street, which will encourage diversified performance and fit the goal of developing the area into an arts mecca. And whereas, Robert Jackson has been the recipient of many awards and acknowledgements, including being named as the 2013 recipient of the Thurgood Marshall Award from the Montclair Branch of the NAACP, the Essex County Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Leadership Award, and the recipient of the Theodore Stevens Outstanding Fatherhood Award, and he was the first Montclair Kimberly Academy Community Scholar, an award instituted to honor some of the most accomplished and remarkable MKA alumni. And whereas, Robert Jackson has earned the respect and admiration of all who know him and work with him. Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. He has used his considerable talent and expertise to help build a better future for his community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the council of the township of Montclair in the county of Essex recognize and extend warmest congratulations to Robert Jackson for his exceptional tenure as mayor, and thank him for lending his knowledge, ability, and integrity in carrying out his many responsibilities in service to the township of Montclair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all your years of service.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really honored to be able to serve my hometown. It has been a challenge in many cases, a pleasure in most. This is my home. My family's been here for quite some time. And as Mr. Cummings spoke to earlier, this is a community that offers individuals with very humble beginnings an opportunity to thrive, and this community has certainly offered me that opportunity. I grew up in this town as the son of a single parent. My mom had an eighth-grade education and provided opportunities for me, and the members of this community provided opportunities for me to do some things, and I'm very grateful to this community, always will be. I also want to thank my wife and my four kids, my wife Cheryl, Danielle, Taylor, Carter, and Chase, my four kids, for being so supportive and patient with me throughout this term. And I also want to thank my colleagues with whom I worked, and we had such a great relationship, and I think did some pretty good things during this eight years. I have nothing but good wishes and support for the new council. I think it's a very strong group, and I think they're going to do great things for this township, and we as citizens owe it to them to be supportive in any way that we possibly can. Again, this has been a great run. I also want to, I cannot miss Mr. Stafford and the entire admin team with whom we worked all over this time and who have made us look good. And I'm just thrilled by the opportunity again to serve, and thank you so much, all of you, for your support and your good wishes, and I look forward to continuing to be involved in the community and continuing to work with this fine group of individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know Councilwoman Schlegar, would you mind just mentioning, you've got a few items for them, I believe, over there, so if you don't mind just at least presenting those, that would be great. Let's give them all a big round of applause again, everybody. Thank you so much. Thank you all so much. Next, as I move through, you'll see we have an opportunity for some brief comments, but I know some people wanted to give some remarks that didn't have an opportunity before, so can I start with in order? We'll just go Councilwoman Schlegar, and then we'll go next, around the desk.
Thank you, Mayor. In sitting down to write today's speech, I thought I might borrow some inspiration from Montclair's most renowned philosopher, the late, great Yogi Berra. Yogi was a very dear man. I'm pleased to say I actually had the privilege of getting to know him just a bit. So what would Yogi say on such an occasion? Perhaps he might say, "Nobody runs for office anymore. There's too many candidates." Or maybe he'd say, "It gets laid early at these council meetings," or quite simply, "It's deja vu all over again." So indeed, for me today is something of deja vu, but a pleasant one and one that I welcome. If you've lost count, this is the start of my fourth term serving on the town council. I'm proud of my record of service to the community that I love, and I'm pleased that the voters have given me this opportunity once again. So in all seriousness, let me express my gratitude to Montclair's voters and to all of my supporters. I appreciate your continued confidence in me, and I don't take this job lightly. I want to thank my campaign team, and it was a different campaign this time around for sure. At the top of the lineup is my wonderful and supportive husband, Ken Schlegar, also my speech polisher, a close second on my terrific children, Stephen, my IT director, and Hannah, my campaign photographer. The campaign was truly a family effort that included Ziggy, our four-legged family member who appeared in all my campaign ads. And batting cleanup, we have my dear, dear friends, Fern Seaman, Carrie Chevett, and Beth Chevett. Thank you. As we are here today to welcome the new council, we are also here to say thank you to the outgoing council. To Rich McMahon and Renee Baskerville, thank you for your service to the Montclair community. And to Mayor Robert Jackson, I offer my best wishes and say a job well done. Thank you for your leadership over these past eight years. You're a true professional and a gentleman. I especially enjoyed your company, your commentary, and your camaraderie, and I will miss working with you. Providing quality and responsive services to the public begins with a first-class township staff. We are lucky to have that here in Montclair, headed by our township manager, Tim Stafford, and our deputy town manager, Brian Scannellberry. I am proud of how township departments work together so efficiently and effectively, providing services that make all the difference to our constituents. There are many dedicated staff members, but there's one who will always stand out for me, and that person who knows this town better than anyone, a legend in our town, and that is Rob Bianco. And I always thank Rob whenever I can. I have been part of several campaigns over the years. I've run with many slate mates. Working with this year's group, the Montclair 2020 Team, was particularly wonderful experience. This was a group of dedicated, committed candidates, which brings me to another Montclair legend, Roger Terry. Thank you, Roger, for all the words of wisdom you shared on our many late-night phone calls. And I'd also like to thank Christine Russo, Henry DeConic, Matt Crichton, Bill Rule, E. Robinson, Felice Harrison Crawford, and Bill Wallach. I'm delighted and thrilled to know that I'll be working alongside Bill, Lori, David, Bob, and Peter to do the important work of the township for the next four years. I know we will be a great team. I want to direct a few special thoughts to you, Bill. I will miss the exchange of godfather quotes between you and Mayor Jackson, but from that I learned that you are probably my consigliere and my council partner, and I'm happy to know we'll be sitting next to each other for the next four years. I cannot say enough wonderful things about our new mayor, Sean Spiller. I love how that sounds, by the way. And I know you to be a professional, fair, thoughtful, kind, and considerate councilman, the best qualities we could ask for in a mayor. Please count on me for any help whenever you need it, and I'm thrilled for you and Lauren and your two boys, but mostly for our beloved town. The seven of us have a big job ahead, and of course, council members cannot solve every problem or provide every single service on our own. Montclair is fortunate enough to have many incredible community groups, partners to help us, and I look forward to working with them all. It's a challenging time for sure, as our town starts to recover from the coronavirus. Montclair was hit hard. I don't have to remind you of the illnesses and the tragically lost lives. As the recovery continues, this council is committed to help in any way we can to support our families, businesses, our police and fire departments, and our other first responders. The Montclair way is to be strong, diligent, and dedicated, and I know we will be all of that together. So I'd like to close by once again quoting Montclair's great philosopher, who actually said on Yogi Berra Day, "Thank you for making this day necessary."
Thank you, Councilwoman. And next, I'm going to ask Councilman Jacobalos.
Thank you, Mayor. Harvey Milk once said, "The American dream starts with neighborhoods. If we wish to rebuild our cities, we must first rebuild our neighborhoods. And to do that, we must understand that the quality of life is more important than the standard of living. To sit on the front steps, whether it's a veranda in a small town or a concrete stoop in a big city, and to talk to our neighbors is infinitely more important than to huddle on the living room lounger, the cayman couch, and watch a make-believe world in not-quite-living color." In Harvey's words, "I hear a powerful call for community, for knowing each other, for seeing each other, for hearing each other, and challenging our own biases and preconceived conclusions, whether those are derived from our life experience or because we're trying to relate to each other for too long through devices or through the media lens that blurs actual reality." If there's a silver lining in these times of crisis, it's that we're being forced to look inward at ourselves and in our town in thinking about who we want to be and what kind of place we want to be. The possibility in Montclair for a more human-centric community has never been stronger. I'm so happy seeing so many kids playing outside, families on their bicycles, and neighbors saying hello. I'm even more delighted when I see this community's roar in support of diversity and inclusion, driven mostly by our young people who have taken to the streets on more than one occasion. It's impossible for me to be sworn into office at this moment and not feel the weight of responsibility of this time. I look ahead at the challenges we are facing, and I'm struck by the fact that the only thing we can be certain about in this challenging time is more uncertainty. Recovering from COVID-19 crisis, reinventing how we all live together in Montclair in the decades ahead, and revisiting how we love one another and honor each other's humanity are the challenges of this day. The change in Montclair isn't going to come from this dais. It's going to come from Montclarians daring to come out from our comfort zones and knowing each other better and communicating more. It's going to come from all of you participating in our humble democracy and staying involved between elections. I challenge all of you, hoping for change, to stay informed on the business of this government and to show up and use your voice in all the ways you can. I am really humbled and honored to be joining this team of leaders, Mr. Mayor, Council Russo, Deputy Mayor Hurlock, Councilor Schlegar, Councilor Price Abrams, and Councilor Cummings. Each of us brings something really unique, our story, our experience, which has shaped our perspective and our judgment. I believe Montclair chose this collective for our collective judgment, and I couldn't be more excited about what's possible. Mayor Jackson, Deputy Mayor McMahon, and Councilor Baskerville, I mean this, I don't even have to read from this, I will not forget what you've done for this town. I won't. Thank you for your years of service and dedication to this special town we call home. And to my fiance, Benjamin, who had to go home, who kept me fed and nurtured for several months during a very busy campaign and a tough time, I want to say thanks. My parents, extended family and friends, everyone watching on YouTube from home, thank you. And to my incredible campaign team, Dave Pirano, Robin Wallace, who I see in the room, and to all my supporters, and to each of you in this room for your friendship, counsel, and candid advice. May we sit here four years from now in an even stronger and better place than we are today. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Now, I'll turn to Councilman Russo.
Thank you, Mayor. I had my prepared speech, and I just wanted to digress a second because my wife had to leave with some guests. The tragedy for my family has been that my mom passed on April 5th, about a month before the election, as you know, and Cagallanos couldn't even do a proper funeral. So for about a month or so, I really struggled with this and tried to continue the campaign and come through the election. I appreciate all of you bearing with me for that. She just kind of sent a message down to me today and said, "Just keep working, keep helping Montclair, keep being there." She mentioned my old friend, Brian Scannellberry, because Brian and I served here 30 years ago, almost, 1992, we started out as council members. He was deputy mayor and this spot right here where I'm sitting. And Brian, my mom, says hello. The other message I got was a text about, I guess in California now, it's about nine, I guess about 10 o'clock, but Jerry Brown, about 9:00 their time, sent me a message. He was the former mayor of Oakland for two terms, who I visited with when I was mayor here. And he always sends messages to me, keeps in touch. He just finished four terms as governor, longest-serving governor in the history of California, a man who served 50 years from the time that he was Secretary of State of California in 1970. That's when he was elected, 1970, the age of 36. He was elected Secretary of State, ran for president in '76. I helped him. We've maintained a friendship all these years. So I got a text from him and a message from my mom in heaven. I just want to tell you all that these are the kinds of things that mean so much to me, and the friendship of Don Zief, who's sitting here today, former councilman, the friendship of Brendan Gill, our Freeholder President, the friendship of Victor Luca, the former mayor, the mayor of Maplewood was here before, earlier with my wife, and Tom Giblin has been my mentor all these years, Assemblyman Tom Giblin, helping me through all my elections. I want to thank all of them for doing all they've done. But I do have a formal speech. It's short. It says, "Dear friends, family, neighbors, and Montclair Council colleagues and staff of Montclair Government, this is a very difficult and challenging time for our community, and I draw a parallel today between now and 60 years ago. 60 years ago, when President Kennedy declared his candidacy in July, this very month of 1960, calling for a new frontier." I don't know if you remember that. "He then took action on civil rights in June of 1963, declaring segregation and racism a moral issue that must be faced and resolved once and for all." That's when I got involved in political life as a teenager, attending Barringer High School in Newark. I was only 15. Soon after that, I worked to elect the city's first African-American mayor. Mayor Jackson will know this. Mayor Ken Gibson was elected in 1970 with people like myself in Newark, joining with the African-American and Puerto Rican community in a convention called the Black and Puerto Rican Convention. And I'm the white Italian family in the Northwater Newark, joining with them, helping elect Ken Gibson. Now, this is the sixth time I've stood in this room to take the oath of office to serve on the Montclair Council. 28 years ago, as I said, referring to Brian, in 1992, I was privileged to serve as council for the 1st Ward, as me and Councilor Hurlock often tease each other. He has three terms, now record-breaking, but I served two terms. And then I was elected mayor in 2000 and sworn in for one term. I wasn't re-elected, as most of our mayors have not been, except Mayor Jackson broke that record. And I took a break after losing that race, and I just volunteered in town for a few years, but then I returned. and I just volunteered in town for a few years. But then I returned at the request of so many residents to join and work with Mayor Robert Jackson and the team of councils who sat here with me for the last eight years. Very frankly, I expected to retire twice before, as my wife will tell you, and I just was going to teach about government and public administration at Montclair State rather than practice it. But so many residents who have helped over these 20 years of total service have asked me repeatedly to stay in the council through this difficult time as we fight the COVID-19 health crisis and rebuild our business community so that Montclair can thrive once again as it was doing earlier this year. So here I am once more, this time continuing to support my outstanding colleagues as they serve their constituents in each of our four wards. You're the key guys and women in the wards, and assisting our new mayor, Sean Spiller, my good friend and fellow educator, and my new-at-large council colleague, Peter Yakabelas, who I've come to know, as we serve all of Montclair during the next four years. This is one town. I always talked about one Montclair on the council. Councilor Baskerville knows that's always been my theme, and I will respond to every neighborhood on every issue with a Montclair Together approach, preserving what is great about our town and reforming and changing what needs improving or fixing. I'll do my best to answer every call, every email, letter, text, as I have always done in the past 20 years of service. I've held every role here. I've been deputy mayor, council in the ward, council-at-large, mayor. No one has had a longer tenure or been elected to more positions by such an active and demanding and educated voting group in this town. I want to thank the thousands of residents who have once again placed their confidence in me and expressed my appreciation to the many supporters, neighbors, family, friends who have helped me win this new term. And a special thank you goes out to my wonderful wife, Christine, who has enabled me to focus on helping others and respond to the many calls and requests to attend every meeting and event in town. I could not have done this job without the assistance of her and of our great professional staff, our town manager, Tim Stafford, deputy manager, Brian Scantlebury, the clerk, the town attorney, all the department directors and employees under the supervision. I could never have done it. My best wishes again, and thanks for their outstanding service to Mayor Robert Jackson, who I love as a brother, Deputy Mayor Rich McMahon, who was my neighbor for many years in Montclair, Councilwoman Renee Baskerville, as you know, who I appointed to the Board of Education myself when I was mayor in 2004. Good luck to the new council members, Peter Yakabelas, Lori Price Abrams, and David Cummings, and my great appreciation for the continued partnership with Councilors Bill Herlock, Robin Schlegar, and now Mayor Sean Spiller. It's been a great privilege to serve with all of you for the last two terms. I look forward to addressing the many important issues facing our town as an effective and positive team, all of us coming from different backgrounds, different parts of town, and different electoral teams, as we continue in the theme I had when I ran for mayor in 2000 to advance Montclair together.
Thank you, Councilman. And now, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Price Abrams.
I recognize I have so much to learn from everybody in the room. So I start with good afternoon. I'm deeply humbled and excited to be sitting at this dais as an elected member of the Montclair Township Council. I have great respect for the commitment and vision that so many have brought to serving our town before me. As you step down, I thank Councilors McMahon and Baskerville for demonstrating your passion and giving so much of your time to the service of this town. Thank you both. And to Mayor Jackson for your enduring engagement and leadership by example, and for the opportunity to learn about the workings of our town over coffee for the past few years. I pledge to bring my own commitment to fairness, integrity, and compassion to the service of our town's residents, businesses, and visitors. I extend in many directions my great appreciation for this opportunity to serve on the council. I thank those who serve on township boards and committees, staff, for offering relevant perspective and knowledge during the campaign, as well as guidance specifically from past township officials, including Mayor Ed Remsen, Councilors Don Zief, Jessica Deconic, and one of my running mates and now dear friend, Roger Terry. Among other friends, I have notable political-minded people, Marcy and Marley, Carrie Shavat, and many other friends, as well as a friend and our elected freeholder president, Brendan Gill, and Assemblyman Giblin, you're just a rock of this community, and I thank you for your leadership and guidance as well. I also thank township professionals, especially Mr. Stafford and Mr. Karasic, for their support throughout this transition into public office. You've really been guideposts for me. Thank you. And I want to thank Ms. Lee for the courtesies during the clerk role during the whole campaign. Thank you for that. I'm deeply appreciative of Councilors Russo, Herlock, and Schlegar, from whom I learned through their example during the campaign friendships that we fostered and deepened and formed, and my new colleagues, Councilors Yakabelas and Cummings. You know, we've had some time to learn some of the 101 about this role as we step into it, and I know we're going to be stepping into a lot of other meeting rooms and conversations, but I look forward to serving with all of you. I deeply appreciate, Mayor Spiller, you for directing your leadership qualities to the service of our town as we move forward to preserve the qualities we cherish about our home in Montclair, and of course, for the friendship that we've had and that has just, of course, deepened in so many ways and will yet as we serve together in a fresh way. I thank so many volunteers and voters who placed their trust in me to represent them and to the campaign team, and that includes Henry and Matt. Christine Russo was extraordinary as a treasurer, who was pretty selfless throughout all of this. But anyway, you all helped me raise my voice, and that's something I'm going to find. And lastly, I thank my family. Rick, Mike, and Sonia are here. Rick was here. But you helped me turn our collective passion for this town into this public service on my part. And I thank you for the special gifts each of you gave and supported me for the process. Sonia has been something of a campaign manager, if I had one at all. She really was by my side, and I'm appreciative that life offered her the chance to sort of be right there with me as we got through the moment. I'll extend, of course, love and appreciation to my whole family. My mom was here earlier. Other family members, I hope, are watching where they're sitting, and appreciate the love and support. But what brought my husband, Rick, and me to this town are, as somebody heard me say before, the cosmopolitan sensibility, the celebration of arts and inquiry, our great schools, and a collective ethos that values diversity. And my two children here are both graduates of the Montclair Public Schools, and they are grateful for the opportunity to grow up in this town. I sought this office to help preserve these cherished qualities while promoting fresh policies for affordability and sustainability. On the way toward these goals, the new council will grapple with challenges which have emerged as critical, including how to navigate our community through the effects of the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, and reexamining how we can better meet our commitments to embracing diversity and racial justice. We will leverage the collective and diverse experience of this council by tapping the many creative strengths of our residents and our professional leadership to address the challenges we face in pursuit of a more vibrant future. I look forward to working with many of you in our collective efforts, and I hope to see some of you for outdoor dining this summer.
We hope to join you. Well, thank you to all my council colleagues, everyone who's been watching and in attendance today. It's such a very special day. We know it's difficult times being able to come together safely and doing so in a limited fashion. We know we each would have loved to have had so many more here join us in person, but we're so happy for those of you who could be here and those who are watching on TV. So a big thank you there. Before I move and speak to the public comment section, we have a number of resolutions that we're going to do, and without objection, we will do them as a consent agenda. I will just note a couple pieces in here, not being inclusive of all, though, that these resolutions, as they are written, and of course, everybody who has them online and in front of them can look through as well, but these do a few things. Number one, it is to appoint William Herlock as deputy mayor. Congratulations there, sir, if it goes It is to appoint Robin Schlegar to the planning board. Adopting Robert's rules, continuing salaries exactly as they are now. It is to appoint Timothy Stafford as permanent manager, non-acting manager. It is to designate Bob Russo as the Second River Joint Meeting Representative. It is to designate Robin Schlegar as the Third River. We love our Second and Third Rivers. And it is to appoint to the Board of School estimate Deputy Mayor Bill Herlock, Councilwoman Lori Price Abrams, and Councilwoman Robin Schlegar. So with that, without objection, I will move all items, all resolutions, as listed. Is there objection?
Second.
Well, hearing no objection, appreciate that. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilor Cummings?
Yes.
Councilor Herlock?
Yes.
Councilor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councilor Russo?
Yes.
Councilor Schlegar?
Yes.
Councilor Yakabelas?
Yes.
And Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Congratulations to you all. And now, I will read and remind everybody that this is our reorganization meeting of the council. Adequate notice has been provided. In January 2020, the Montclair Times, in an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and to maintain social distancing practices, this reorganization meeting and further meetings until the pandemic is over is only available to the public remotely. Comments from the public during this public comment session will also be conducted remotely. Those who wish to participate now during the public comment, which is about to begin, should dial into 425-535-9484. Participants will be put in the queue. The administrator will notify callers when it's their turn to speak by saying the last two digits of their phone numbers, which will be displayed on our system. For example, if you call with the number 973-444-555, you will hear the administrator saying, "Number 55, it is your turn to speak." Caller will then hear the word "unmute" and will be offered the opportunity to make any comment. So with that now, I open the meeting for public comment.
Mayor, there is no one in the phone queue. You may wish to extend the public comment session. Anyone in the room, of course?
Sure. I will do exactly that. We will see if anybody does join, but if there is anyone of our invited guests who came in today and in compliance with our social distancing, we appreciate that. But if there is anyone in person who would like to speak as part of public comment, please come forward. Freeholder president?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing me a few minutes. It's great to be here. Mayor Spiller, congratulations on you, a member of the council.
Thank you.
Our outgoing mayor, outgoing member of the council.
Thank you. And I will be brief. First, to our outgoing mayor, Robert Jackson. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I look forward to continuing to work with you at the county. But you have set the gold standard, as far as I am concerned, as being mayor. You conducted yourself with class. Your temperament, under some intense pressure over the years, was really something that I admired and try to live up to. And there is no question that Montclair, because of your leadership and the people that you've served with over those eight years, is in a better place. So I just wanted to give another round of applause for Mayor Robert. To Councilman McMahon, you were part of those accomplishments. It's been great. I know you're not going anywhere. Old and new Montclair, I like to think of one Montclair, one community trying to come together on each and every issue. But thank you for your service, and I know we're going to continue to hear from you in the future. Another round of applause for Councilman McMahon. To Dr. Baskerville, a campaign well-run. I know, again, when you were presented that proclamation, both for you and Councilman McMahon, and they list all the organizations that you've been a part of over the years. Those are long nights, long days, and you raise your hand to do it, but sometimes that goes unnoticed. So on behalf of the community, I just wanted to say thank you for all those organizations that you have participated in. And again, I know, too, you will continue to be a voice that we will look to. You will continue to be a leader in this community, and it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you. So thank you. To the members of the council, to the mayor, both at the county level and as a lifelong Montclair resident mayor, I'm looking forward to the challenges that are in front of us, the issues of racial justice that have been raised, our response to this pandemic, as well as protecting the diversity, which I think many of us in this community love, I think is the real challenge that we have before us. Each of you touched on it in your remarks. I consider each of you to be personal friends. It's been an honor either to work with you over many years or to get to know you over the last few months. And I want you to know that you will always have a partner, both as a county representative, but most importantly, as a Montclair resident who wants to make sure that this community continues to be internationally known, and internationally known for all the right reasons. So on behalf of myself, my members of the Freeholder Board, the other Mr. Gill... The big-time Mr. Gill. Yeah, the big-time Mr. Gill, who also sends his regards. We're hoping maybe next year we'll have an opportunity to recognize him, you know, when we'll be able to do the Fourth of July parade again. But on behalf of our entire family, you know, congratulations to each and every one of you, and thank you for volunteering to serve our community. All the best. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, sir. Mr. Stafford, anyone else?
I have nothing further, Mayor.
All right, great. With that, I will open it up to our staff. Are there any other comments? Township attorney?
Congratulations to everybody. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much. To our clerk?
I'd like to, this speaks to the mayor, Mayor Jackson, Deputy Mayor McMahon, and Dr. Baskerville. I'd like to say that it has been a great pleasure and an honor to have worked with you. I've watched, listened, and learned so much as you've all made important and vital decisions to better serve the community, and I thank you for your great, outstanding service, and my best wishes to all of you. The new council, I'd like to say congratulations, and I look forward to working with you all, individually and collectively, and collectively to best serve the township. The clerk's office is here to assist you, so if you have any issues or need any assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out to us.
Thank you.
I wish you all great success.
Thank you so much. I will now open up to deputy manager. Anything else?
I'd like to thank all the council members, the people who support this town, and for Mayor Jackson and Mr. McMahon, it was a pleasure working with them. They really kept their children in the Bronx, so it's been a pleasure to be with them. And I know the names of the thirteen employees who are five, so I need to say goodbye to these sports metaphors. And actually, to follow along with the build, Robert Jackson is a building, as of ours, mayor's concern today. So he's done a great job. I'm so proud of him, and I look forward to having the same in this department with you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Deputy manager Scantlebury? Do you not have some news you should be sharing with the general public? Just got married.
I only have one question. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, congratulations.
Thank you. I've had it in a good while. So Robert Jackson.
Excellent. That's great. And Mr. Manager, anything for you?
I look forward to saying congratulations to the Zoom Council, and I look very much forward to working with you. I certainly appreciate your confidence, which you never want to lose. And I certainly have enjoyed and appreciated working with Dr. Baskerville, Deputy Mayor McMahon, and Mayor Jackson over the last now almost six years. I'm proud of our achievements, and I look forward to seeing you in different circumstances, certainly in the long term.
There is one other thing for us, Mayor, when you're done.
Yes, I think I know what that is, right? So at this point, we will adjourn. for all three of you as you head out today. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Abstained.
Let's go.
Sure, and that's for you.
Thank you.
I'll get you the book of it.